I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council Meeting, Monday, September 22nd, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and is the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, roll call.
Counselor Lazo.
President.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Chenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Provost.
Present.
We have a quarrel. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Consider and Accept the Meeting Minutes of September 8th, 2025.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions in the minutes of the meeting? If not, all those in favor, opposed.
Abstained.
One abstention, Counsel Ortiz. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Subcommittee's Department of Public Works, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a meeting on September 17th, Agenda Items Number 10 through 15 are on tonight's agenda, and we do not have one scheduled in the near future. Thank you.
Moving on to Education and Services, Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting last week for Agenda Item Number Nine, and we do not have a meeting scheduled at this time.
Moving on to General Government, Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have not had a meeting, we did not have a meeting scheduled, and we do not have one scheduled in the near future.
Moving on to Protectors of Person's Property, Counsel Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We haven't had a meeting since our last one, and there isn't one scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Moving on to Chairman's Announcements. Oh, I'm sorry. How could I skip Planning Development, Counsel Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a meeting on Monday, September 15th. Items 16 through 19 were discussed. There's no meeting planned in the future at this point.
Thank you. Moving on to Chairman's Announcements, a couple of quick things. I'd just like to announce to the public, we're looking for people to serve on the Charter Review Committee, takes five members, and the Bylaw Review Committee takes five members. We will have those positions filled by the next council meeting. There was a big discussion by a citizen last meeting, and we were taken to task about what we should be doing, and the gentleman was on the council for approximately nine years, and it came to my attention that our Bylaw Review Committee, Charter Review, the Bylaw Committee hasn't had a Bylaw Committee since 14 years ago. So, councilors do the best they can with their volunteer position, and as I see it, working with the town manager and redoing some of the things that we do that has been missed, we're trying to, little by little, take the bite out of the elephant till we get everything realigned again. So, part of what we're going to be doing is the Charter Review Committee and the Bylaw Review Committee. The chairman, I think we already, I've appointed, not appointed, but asked Counselor Kelly to serve as chairman of the Bylaw, and Counselor Montigny as chairman of the Charter Review. But we still have openings for citizens to get on these boards and to assist us in working on the bylaws and charter. So, moving forward, feel free, contact myself, town manager's office, feel free to come forward and step up to the plate with us. It's a lot of fun working together. That's it for Chairman's Announcements. I'm going to be moving on to Town Manager's Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First off, just to announce that there is the Worcester Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board Rider Community Population Position. If anyone's interested in joining the WRTA Advisory Board as a rider commuter, please contact our office. It's a one-year term. Your information would then be provided to the WRTA. It is designated for one of the residents, one resident of the 16 communities that serves by the fixed route, which we are one of them. They do that on a rotating basis, and it's filled on a first-come, first-served basis. Everybody's interested in that. On tonight's agenda, we had, under Presentations, the Urban Renewal Plan Major Amendment by BSC Group. It was notified earlier today that we're requesting that that, along with the vote, be postponed to October 20th. It requires a public hearing, so therefore, the public hearing will be posted for October 20th. We're looking to schedule that at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. So therefore, there'll be no presentation in the town council. Instead, the public hearing will be held first, and then the town council would vote on it on October 20th. So I respectfully request that Agenda Item 19 be postponed to October 20th. Like to congratulate the Southbridge Business Partners on the Autumn Fest that was held this weekend. It was a great day out in the public. I'm sure we'll have some further comments about it, but thank you to all that put on that event. It was well-attended, and this year, something differently. The Police Department usually does a national night out for the Police Department. However, this year, the chief did what was called a unity in the community, and did that in partnership with the Southbridge Business Partners. He did that from 10 to 5, and I think that was an outstanding event. Everything went well, and congratulations to all, and I know we'll bring something up at a later date. Announcement that this Saturday, September 27th, at approximately 9:00 PM, the Southbridge Water Department will be conducting a hydrant flow test. That testing will be done in the area of Hyde's Manufacturing located at 54 Eastford Road in Southbridge. That procedure will include testing the operation capacity of the hydrant on that property. During that period, customers should check their water before washing clothes. They may also get accumulated sentiments in their house laterals the next morning. They'll clear up after a brief run of the water on the tap, and that has been published in numerous agencies. And finally, this evening, I did pass out to all councilors the book, which is a book manual that has a lot of information in it relative to the recent dispatch, regional dispatch feasibility study that was conducted with five towns, those towns being Southbridge, Sturbridge, Spencer, Charlton, Auburn. As a result of that, there's a recommendation forthcoming. Originally, we were going to try to do the presentation this evening, but I thought, in discussion with the chiefs, that this is an important decision for the town of Southbridge moving forward in the dispatch operations, and wanted to give you all the available information possible, so we're giving you the manuals tonight, so you can really read and delve into the study, the agreements. Also, the chief, and I know this was sent out to all councilors, that we have a site visit in Auburn, which is a potential location for the dispatch center that is being developed. And also, he's arranged, because it's very important to see the differences in how dispatch has evolved over the last 20 to 30 years. It really has, it's a whole new concept, not a new concept, but it has evolved, and there's a lot more regional dispatch centers going up. So, on October 1st, there's an opportunity to look at one in operation in the Foxborough. Welcome to attend, it would really give you an insight as to how that operates. As of today, Southbridge, I mean, Sturbridge, Spencer, and Charlton have voted to go into that regional dispatch center in Watrousett, and the town of Auburn will be voting this evening, and we would be the last town to consider it. So I really want you to have all the information possible and make an informed decision, and if you have any questions, please reach out to Chief Normadine and Chief Woodson with any questions, comments, concerns, and really look at these operations and how they would enhance or benefit our community. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Moving on to...
Go ahead. Thank you, Chair, through you. Isn't it supposed to be in Southbridge?
No.
What change?
So, it was a potential location that we were offered for them to look at, and then one came available in Auburn, so that's why. We never, there was never a specific location selected, it was...
I thought we was looking at Pleasant Street, that building there before.
So, we had given a variety of locations to that dispatch center that's looking to do the regionalization, and one became available in Auburn, so they're looking at that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Presentations, number seven, Housing Production Plan, Emily Glaubitz, CM, RPRC, Lead Planner, and Katie Eoda, the Town Planner. Welcome.
Good evening. So I'll introduce myself. My name is Emily Glaubitz. I'm a manager of housing programs at the Central Mass Regional and Planning Commission. We're the regional planning agency for the town of Southbridge, as well as 39 other communities. So, I'm here to present kind of a background on the housing production plan, the process up to this point, and give kind of a breakdown of how the plan is structured. I'm not sure if you all have had a chance to read through it yet, and then I'll welcome kind of any questions. So, and I have a few slides here, just to give some visuals. So, this was the town of Southbridge's first development of a housing production plan. This plan is a way for towns and cities in Massachusetts to better understand their local housing need and demand, any development constraints or opportunities, and just create an overall kind of vision for more affordable and diverse housing options for the future. It's a plan that, once it's approved by the state's Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, will be in place for five years. So, a goal of these plans, I'll say that this is probably the eighth or ninth one that I've worked on in central Massachusetts. So it's really structured as a way to find ways to diversify the community's housing stock, for example, if there aren't enough ownership opportunities, multifamily housing, senior housing, as well as to find ways to increase the deed-restricted housing options in a community, and I'll get into a little bit of that in a bit. So, the way that the plan is structured, it begins with a comprehensive housing needs assessment, that's all the great data that we've gotten from the census, as well as more local sources like the Assessor. It creates a set of affordable housing goals, so these are numeric goals, as well as implementation strategies. So I'll talk also a little bit more about that in a minute. Just to provide you kind of a background on how we've gotten to this point, so I am working as the consultant, but we've formed a working group meeting, a working group that's been meeting monthly between April of last year up until this spring, and that had a great representation of members from the Planning Board, Board of Health, a former town council member, ZBA, Conservation Commission, and of course, the Town Planner and Economic Development Director. This group really provided insightful information into the town, the history, the unique challenges, and just great feedback every step of the way. So I just want to thank that group for really making this process so easy on my end, honestly. So, we had a number of opportunities for public input as well. We had a community survey that was open at the end of last year, in 2024. We had a few public workshops in the fall of last year as well, one of which was, we used a Spanish translator at the Senior Center to make sure that the Spanish-speaking population in town had an opportunity to provide their feedback. And so then, following the public outreach, took some time to write the plan, it's about 80 pages or so, but it's a lot of good stuff in there. And just last week, the Planning Board did vote to approve it prior to submitting to the state. We do need a vote of approval of the plan from both the Planning Board and the town council. So, I assume that you're not prepared to vote on it tonight, but I can return in a meeting in the next month or so, when you've had a chance to really dive into the plan and hopefully vote to approve it, so we can submit it to the state. Let's see. Yeah, I think that's all for that. So just a little bit of background of why this is important and why we kind of got started on this plan in the first place. So, under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, every town and city in Massachusetts is required to set aside 10% of their housing stock as affordable to households earning 80% or less of the area median income. So right now, Southbridge actually does not meet that requirement. So you're at, you have 385 units that are deed-restricted under this state definition of affordability, so that equals just under 5%. So you're about halfway there. So 402 more units are needed to reach that 10% goal. So you can see the chart on the left is the list of all the, I think these are all rental units, but homeownership is, can count as, under this as well. So these are all the units that qualify under Chapter 40B. So this was kind of the incentive to get this plan moving forward and kind of create some strategies for developing more affordable housing. Let me see. Oh, so this slide shows kind of the state's definition of who qualifies and for deed-restricted affordable units. So for a single-person household, this would be anyone earning less than $68,500. For a two-person, like dual-income household, this would be a household under, annually earning under $78,250. So that would qualify and make these households eligible. Let's see. Yeah, and then I just wanted to talk a little bit of just when you're going through the plan, how it's structured. So like I said, it begins with the housing needs assessment, so this is all the demographic characteristics that we've collected, the most recently available data that's available from the census and the American Community Survey estimates that are updated every year. Let's see. It talks about age changes, how Southbridge still has a lower median age than a lot of the surrounding communities, but if there's a chart in there that kind of breaks down the trend of declining populations under the age of 20, paired with increasing populations over the age of 55. Discusses kind of median income, it's, which falls below the Steiner County levels, the rate of owner occupancy housing, only about 44% are owner occupied and 56% are rented. This is kind of a pretty stark contrast to most of the central Massachusetts communities, really other than like Worcester. Let's see. Discusses the aging housing stock, so really kind of, it's across the board, demographics, housing supply, housing market characteristics. Then the second part of the plan is the housing challenges. So regulatory constraints, like exclusionary zoning or excessive parking minimums, environmental constraints, like wetlands, protected areas, any topography or soils that would make it challenging for development in certain areas, landfills, polluted areas, things like that, it just discusses that. And then also barriers to like community infrastructure, like utilities, transportation, the availability of land, the capacity, you know, on the town's end for planning for this, applying for grants, et cetera, community perceptions to housing, just really things that might get in the way of a developer kind of selecting to Southbridge to be a community to build affordable housing in. And then there's the Housing Production Goals section, and the Housing Strategies and Implementation matrix, which I wanted to just talk about a little bit, because that's really kind of like the good, that's the meat of the plan, is, okay, what are the challenges to housing in the town, but how, what did this working group kind of recommend for the town to move forward? So, it's broken into four different categories of strategies. The first one is capacity-building strategies, meaning both leveraging financial resources as well as professional and community support to conduct housing initiatives and continue community outreach that we have started with this process, but would be great to, you know, continue having these conversations and ensuring, you know, access to housing and safe housing and affordable housing is kind of at the forefront for the town. An example of a recommendation from this is to establish a municipal affordable housing trust fund with an active board of trustees to oversee affordable housing initiatives in Southbridge. So, the good thing about this, it's not an added tax or fee on residents, but it would be a designated fund to set aside if the town were to come into some money for affordable housing initiatives, could be capitalized with developer fees, grants, donations, things like that, including donated land. The second set of recommendations is zoning and policy strategies. So, since regulatory barriers, you know, that end up preventing much-needed types of housing from being built, changing the zoning or implementing policies to help facilitate the types of housing that meets people's needs but are also desirable, and it fits with the character of the community. So an example of this that came up a lot, both in kind of what we heard through public outreach, as well as these working group conversations, was to pursue zoning changes to allow cluster developments of small homes, such as tiny home communities, cottage housing communities, or mobile home parks. Yeah, so the third set of strategies is under housing development, so ways the town can provide support for projects and remove certain challenges and barriers to creating housing, whether it's through partnerships or advocacy, and really taking the steps kind of on the public side to prepare for new development. An example of this was to encourage redevelopment and adaptive reuse of Southbridge's historic mills through incentives. And then finally, the fourth set of strategies was housing preservation strategies, so just making sure that the existing affordable housing stock is preserved in perpetuity, so the town doesn't lose these units on the subsidized housing inventory, and exploring ways that the town can support residents and local housing organizations, as well as restoring vacant and abandoned properties. So an example of this was continue to administer the Southbridge Housing Rehabilitation Program funded through the Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant, CDVG program, to support local housing rehabilitation efforts. So, the way that it's structured, the each recommendation is, has a few paragraphs describing it, but if you flip to the very end of the plan, we have broken it out, each recommendation into a housing action plan. So this is, it lists the recommendation, the strategy, it lists the expected implementation years, so you can see some of these maybe might be more low-hanging fruit that the town could address in the next few years, maybe it's something that the town needs to kind of check in on yearly or on a regular basis, or maybe it's something that the town doesn't have the capacity to address right now, but it's, it's something to think about if an opportunity does arise, so maybe put that in more of the 2029, 2030, or past that box. And then it lists the parties responsible for implementation. So that kind of makes it easier if you're serving on a board or committee, or you're an employee of the town, kind of to see where your scope is for this plan. And I think that is all that I had for my quick presentation. I don't know if Katie or Peggy had any additional remarks, or I can accept questions as well.
Counsel Chenier.
Thank you. You could go back, I think, first page.
Okay, how do I do? Okay, there you go.
No, you just want to go up. Where showed the housing? Right there. My concern is the promotion of affordable housing in our community that we've taken away from that affordable housing. As development is being done in the housing market within Southbridge, they're leaning away from affordable housing to market-rate housing. And so, as we make more affordable housing, all I feel is we're creating a monster. We are creating a plan to have a short-term affordable housing in those units, then eventually return those units to marketplace, the market rate. You name a few of them, Dresser Park, Quinbar Plaza, what I'm surprised that you don't see there, because I went to the Senior Center when you had the program presentation, and I stressed the importance of senior housing, that we don't really have a whole lot of senior housing, we're an older community and we're needing more, which this doesn't seem to address. Senior housing addresses affordable housing. What I find difficult is that you list some of the housing units up there, and I'll use Lebanon Hill Housing isn't up there. There's 116 units up in Lebanon Hill Housing that were subsidized for approximately 40 years. They've recently been sold three times in the last year and a half or so, and they went from affordable housing to market-rate housing. They were at $640, they went to $950, and now they're going up to $1,800 plus. And they're, and the elderly are being forced out with nowhere to go. They're going to be living in their cars, they're going to be moving in with families. There's a mass exit now that's taking place there because they can't get affordable housing because there's no Section 8 available. I believe in Massachusetts, we've got 12,000 people waiting for a Section 8 alone, and 10-year wait plus. So, what does that do to your affordable housing plan? You might be eligible, but you're not going to be able to get into that plan for a long, long time. You mentioned in there Brookside Terrace, 168 units, in 2030, their subsidies go away. Are we prepared as a community or as a state that if those units become from affordable housing to market-rate housing, where are those families going to go? 168 units, you're talking a lot, a lot of people. The average income for two families, $78,250. I can tell you that very few people make that kind of money at Lebanon Hill Housing, and there's no assistance there, there's no help for them. There, there's, I know of 21 vouchers, 21 Section 8 vouchers that were given years ago when the subsidies went away, and they're managed by Worcester Housing. They set the rate, not even a, one of those units, Section 8 units are managed by Southbridge Housing Authority, and the other 20, I believe, is done by Worcester Housing Authority. So what happens is Worcester Housing Authority comes in, the landlord makes a recommendation what they need for rent, Worcester Housing approved 1,400 and some change, almost 1,500. So Worcester Housing Authority's paying that. So the balance difference that they went, were approved at, they're making the landlord, the tenants pay the $1,750, $2,000 for two-bedroom units, and so that comes out of pocket, where Worcester Housing didn't take any consideration of the added increases that these elderly population has. I find it difficult to support the Southbridge Housing Plan because there's no mention of senior housing in there. There's no mention of how we can help the seniors in our community, it's how we help affordable housing. But the seniors have paid all their lives, and they're left out in the cold, and they're going to become homeless. We, as a council, made an initiative this year of providing $100,000 to help some people that are being forced through the eviction process, which we just got the approval now and they're moving forward with it, but it's good to December 31st. I think the housing plan needs to address senior housing more than just affordable housing. Affordable housing is everybody, but I believe with the lack of senior housing that we have in this community, that we're creating a monster by asking for more affordable housing that is eventually going to be developed into market rate. You had places in the core town, 600 block, Union Street, Cross Street, that was paying $700 a month, that saw their rents increase and evictions taking place. You saw it on Main Street and in the Core District, rents, out you go, you know, you have white straight, white strategies coming into town, they're all big markets that are paying ridiculous amount of money for these housing to actually fill their pockets and not helping the affordable housing and not helping the senior housing. So I wish that, within the next few weeks, that you could look more towards the senior housing and to address the future needs, places like Brooksville Terrace that in five years, five years is just time, that could potentially force these people out of their homes with market rates, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's, that's really helpful, and just exactly the feedback that I'm looking for for this. We can definitely put more of an emphasis on senior housing. There is a section in there that talks about the senior housing options that are available in town, but we can definitely put more of an emphasis on how those are threatened to, you know, expire, and that's a population that's very important for Southbridge. And that's a population that's very important for Southbridge. The question about Lebanon Hill, I'm not sure why that's not on the list. Maybe it might be in process? I think Katie can speak more to that.
Yeah, so in terms of this list, this is what the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities currently has on the registry and the column about the affordability expiration. So Lebanon Hill unfortunately fell off that list, and there are ways of maintaining that affordability for future projects if there's public interest in cross-government, private sector, looking into getting tax credits to revitalize current units, and that can be a mechanism for maintaining that affordability. But I think I would like to add on to what Emily has presented to emphasize that one of the greatest like powers of this plan is to put into the hands of the municipality options for how they would like to see their affordable housing. So if Southbridge is interested in affordable housing that is targeted towards seniors, this plan is what gives you that ability to make that choice and to give it a local option besides what might be used through a 40B project that the town wouldn't have as much of a say in. So I hope that was helpful to your questions.
If I may continue. I would suggest that you consider senior housing as a priority in the plan, and this way, senior housing, there's plenty, not plenty, there was always affordable housing for the younger people, not for the seniors. You go to Limited Dresser Park, Quinbar Plaza, and that was it. When Tagged Lebanon Hill Housing went away, it had no longer, it's senior, it's a mixed use places now, and it's a difficult challenge for the senior citizens to live in those kind of places because of the demographics. Same thing, you list School Street, not School Street, you list Cross Street, there's a home that you wouldn't put senior housing in there for. The type of people that live there is difficult for the seniors to adjust to. So I think all those things in the consideration that I personally would like you to make senior housing a priority and the other affordable housing a secondary issue maybe, but I think it's important for senior housing because they're the most vulnerable at the moment. And it's going to be difficult when somebody's parked out in front of our houses that are seniors living in their cars. It's going to happen. People are already being evicted, and it's going to happen. And we as a community is just sitting back, looking at it.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So I get a little frustrated with terms like affordable housing and what that actually means. Affordable housing, well, what's affordable to me is maybe not affordable to somebody else. So, I mean, this is a term of art, I know, is being used, but the folks out here there who are listening may not really understand what you mean by affordable housing. You know, and what is the difference between affordable housing and subsidized housing? And I think that should be explained. You said that 10% of the inventory has to be affordable. So, I mean, if I'm sitting out there, I'm asking, well, does that mean, you know, if we don't meet that goal, does that mean 90% of our houses aren't affordable to anybody? That's not true. All right? So what is it specifically that is meant by affordable housing?
Yeah, that's a great question that is very confusing term. So I think there's kind of two different approaches to affordable housing. There is naturally occurring affordable housing, so depending on like the market changes and what a household is earning, housing may be, you know, naturally affordable. What this plan, because this is a state-approved plan, so we're kind of working with the state and federal government's definitions of what is affordable. So under their, yeah, their definitions, it has to be, it has to have a deed on the house or the apartment, saying that landlords, you know, cannot charge more than a certain amount. And it is restricted only for households that earn up to a certain amount. So that's what I mean when I'm saying it's affordable, it's deed restricted to households earning up to 80% or less of the area median income. So that's kind of the more general term of deed restricted affordable housing. Housing can also be restricted for households earning up to only 60% of the area median income, or 50%, or even 30% of the area median income. So those are really the very low-income households and the extremely low-income households. I think we addressed that in the plan as well, recommending that the town work with developers to create housing that is for 60% AMI, area median income households. Hope that clarifies a little bit, but it is very confusing. I understand.
So, so thank you. Just to be clear, what we're talking about as far as affordability is concerned is not affordable generally, talking about affordable for a certain segment of the population, correct? Okay. So...
And that can also get, sorry, one more thing, that can also get confusing with Section 8 vouchers too. So with that, a person goes to a housing authority and applies for a voucher. The voucher stays with the person, so they can go to an affordable apartment, or they could go to a market rate apartment, whoever will accept their housing voucher. Whereas this is focused on essentially, the deed restriction stays with the unit, not the person. So I think that can also get confusing as well.
So when you, I mean, I couldn't quite read the slide, but you showed some income levels.
Oh, yeah.
Up there. Okay, so the figures there, I believe, just for example, 68.5 for a single person, is that what we're calling the median income?
That's 80% of the median income.
That's 80%.
So that 117,300, 117,300 is the median income as of the most recent year, I think this is 2025, of the area, and it's an area that's defined by HUD. So this includes...
I'm sorry, it's defined by what?
The Office of Housing and Urban Development, the federal.
And 117.3 is the median income for a...
It's for a group of communities. So this includes Southbridge, it includes, I think, Webster, I think Worcester, Millbury. It's a group of at least 20 or so communities. So this isn't just, that's why it seems very high, but this is not just for Southbridge, this is for the area.
So this is for the area, the 117.3, is that a family of four, or is that a...
Yeah, I think they use a family of four.
Family of four, okay. So a single person's making 68.5 is 80% of the median income for a single person then? Is that correct? Is that what that means?
They use some kind of formula to get to that. I'm not exactly sure how the formula works, but...
Well, I'm just curious though. I mean, we say that only 10% of the units are affordable, yet, you know, if you go, if you take a $68,500 salary, and the typical, you know, the typical recommendation by financiers and mortgage bankers, et cetera, for a household, a housing payment is 30% of gross, all right, of your gross monthly. Well, by my calculation, a single person making 68.5 should be able to afford $1,712 per month, all right? And if you just look at the apartment listings and, I just did a quick, quick search, and I found a number of apartments, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, under that amount. So I have the question that we're under the 10% affordable housing limit.
Yeah, that's a really great point as well. So I think, like I said, the naturally occurring affordable housing definition, I think, fits really well in the Southbridge market at the moment. The thing is, what the state is looking for is for these units to have deed restrictions on them, saying that the landlords won't increase the rent. So that's kind of where it's, it's like an issue, so...
So...
They could if they wanted to. Well, currently...
Somebody wants to talk, approach the podium, Peggy.
It's the small a versus big A question, right? So these affordable apartments, the question we've had to CMRPC from day one of this study is how do we incentivize the property owners to deed those apartments affordable, capital A affordable? We don't know yet. So if someone could help us understand that, that would really then help us figure out how to get the 10% to be deed restricted according to the state's equation of affordable housing.
So, now, are we talking about building new inventory? Is this what the plan would consist of? I mean, we'd have to figure out how to do that, right? And then we certainly wouldn't be prioritizing, I don't believe the state law allows us to prioritize Southbridge residents, current Southbridge residents. So we'd be building new units or building out for the general population in the area, not for Southbridge residents, right? Yet it seems like our rentals are fairly affordable. I'm not really sure why we would want to incentivize more construction in the housing area.
I mean, the plan includes a variety of recommendations. New construction is just one of the options, you know, creating partnerships with developers, providing more of a say from town residents, locals, employees on what kind of housing they would prefer to see. But there's also other recommendations about, you know, preserving existing units, like Peg was saying, finding a way to get existing landlords to deed restrict their apartments, if there's like a program that the town could set up to kind of create some kind of incentive, tax incentive. Yeah, it's, there's a variety of, it's not just producing new, brand-new housing. We tried to put in like a mix of strategies to address the town's housing needs.
So somehow the state wants to see deed restrictions on these units? And what incentives is the state providing for these landlords or for homeowners to provide deed restrictions?
So one of the recommendations that's both in the plan and that is currently being implemented by our department for our Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehab Programs with units that are like a two or a three-family house that's being rehabbed, all of those units we are trying to add to the inventory. So someone who is getting the benefit of this grant program to have their home improved gets that as an incentive for then deeding their rental units as affordable.
Of course, the problem is with build, if we build out to satisfy this 10%, and we bring in a lot of new people into town, then our population increases and therefore the 10% becomes larger. See how that math works? So then we'll again be underwater with regard to the 10%. But anyway, I yield to...
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First of all, I appreciate you coming up here and getting all the fired questions out to you, but I'm sure you're used to it as well. A lot of us in this community are struggling, and we're just trying to do our best for the seniors and the veterans and the individuals that don't make a lot of money. We completely understand that. But I will say, just to go back to the point that Counselor Kelly had brought up, what is the state doing to help us provide this 10%? Because you brought up CDVG money, that's many entitlement federal money. What's the state doing as far as incentivizing municipalities to go out there besides plans? It seems to me it's very much an unfunded mandate that we're required to do it, or we have to go do hostile 40B projects, right? Where the town has no say, and the state tells us exactly what we're supposed to do while they take our tax money. So is there anything that can help out, like services? Where we have affordable housing like this, what is the state bringing aboard to help us with our fire department, our ambulance services, our police officers, our schools, and anything else that may apply to that? DBW?
If I may, I could just remind us, the recent development projects we have seen, for instance, through the American Optical, were the low-income tax credits, so those LI-Tech credits are what developers are reaching for, that was used also at the Wells. So that's one of the state's programs. And then just to remind everybody, one of the ways to prevent the 40B, I think Emily walked through this pretty clearly, but one of the ways is, so with this plan and a half a percent of deeded properties going online once a year, we have then put ourselves in a position to stop 40Bs from coming through the town. So this is one tool, if we accept this, and then the other tool is getting those properties online. Katie's been working hard to try to figure out, are all the properties we have deeded on that list through the state so that they're being counted? And then this other strategy we have is through the CDVG housing projects, getting as many of those deeded. So we're trying, these little strategies, again, the goal is stopping 40Bs from happening.
Thank you. Also, Case Street and the Wells Apartments, aren't those affordable? I know they have vouchers here and there, but aren't those affordable too as well?
Yes, that was one of the issues when we were looking at the current inventory, is that those were not online. So the state has a very extensive process of documenting your units and submitting it to them to approve to put on the inventory. So those are actually in process to be included in our inventory.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You brought up something about the veterans, and completely George Chenier has brought up the seniors, senior houses. I know a lot of people are working on that and the CDVG money, and we appreciate the staff of the Economic Development to boot forward the applications for $100,000 to help out our most needy seniors before they become evicted. But we do provide a lot of services here within the town, and besides the CDVG, we also have Chapter 115, as you brought up. Why can't the state take a look at that? Because, you know, you have a veteran service officer within the town, could have 10, 15, 20 veterans and surviving spouses on that, and they automatically qualify because they're 200% below the poverty level to get that. I mean, 200%, we got people coming in with 900 bucks a month, that's all they get. So the town and the state help out in that way. Why can't that be accounted for as affordable housing that we have? I mean, they're covering the cost, literally, of the rent or even the property itself that they own.
Is that part of the existing like public housing stock, or, sorry?
No, you have HUD-VAS, which is the VA side of the house that provide vouchers, Section 8 vouchers to veterans, and they have to be pre-approved that those apartments or whatever may be have to be approved, just like regular Section 8 housing. But in this case, this is, those veterans and surviving spouses, and in some cases, adult dependents, where the town provides 25% of the funds, where the, and the state provides 75% of those funds. And it's well audited, but it's something like, why can't that be considered as well?
That sounds like something that, where it's like a voucher that's attached to the person, not the unit. So again, unfortunately, I wish for this plan, it would be a better representation of the actual affordability that exists in Southbridge and other communities as well if they included those vouchers. There's a map in the plan that shows a breakdown of federal vouchers and state vouchers, and I think it's upwards of 600, 640, something like that. So that's, they're clearly showing there are people who are getting help, it's just they're not living in deed-restricted units. So, yeah, that's certainly one of the, honestly, the criticisms I have of this kind of approach to a plan, is they don't include those, so...
Was one of the, and my last question is, was one of the slides that you had about local options, something about where the town accepts local options, or clauses?
I don't think I had a slide on that, but...
I didn't know if you had that up there, okay. As far as the planning process.
Right.
Thank you, that's all, yeah.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I just want to say it the way it is, probably some people are not going to like it. I don't believe affordable houses accept for age of 55 and older couples... I don't believe affordable housing except for age of 55 and older couples, they're on certain income, or veteran disabled. It seems like it's a scam in that program. A lot of young people come in with a family, they're considered as a low income, they live for free, they're R State or Fed, they teach them to be lazy, not to work, too money a job out there, they don't want to work, just because you have a low income, you can get a free apartment. And I think this is the problem, we're not looking at the elderly and the veteran disabled. And I think that's what you should look on it. If you look on that program, I don't think I'm going to support it, to be honest with you. Just look for the older people, like I know a couple, they're 80 and plus, she's 80 years old, still working because she can't afford $1,500 apartment. Her husband, he's a veteran disabled, he gets a certain amount, and those are the people we need to help. People struggling for us and fight for the country and the people work all their life to pay social security to be able to retire at the end of their life, not the people young, they can work just being lazy and, and depend on the federal or state to feed them. Thank you.
Any other questions by the council? Counsel Mont, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the speaker. I have a couple of questions. First, I want to say thank you so much for your presentation because, and for answering the questions, because honestly, I feel like my eyes have been like wide open now to this whole thing. And I don't like it at all, but I don't want you to confuse that, like I really appreciate you coming here. Um, because in reality, Counsel Kelly has already pointed out that, you know, 30% grows, $1,700, we don't have an affordable housing problem in Southbridge. This, this rule is that there's 10% deeds need to have restrictions in them. That's, it just blows my mind. But the real problem we have, like, previous counselors have mentioned here, is the senior housing problem. Like, the customer that needs our help are the seniors and disabled and veterans. It's not just random people, and it's certainly not people from other towns, because I have no interest, because what am I supposed to do? I'm kind of venting a little bit, but the public is probably thinking some of the same things I have in my head. Lebanon Hill, you take it, it has $600, $700 a month, and now it goes up, you know, 800 to 1,200 at Lebanon Hill, falls out of the affordable housing, and we're supposed to spend like taxpayer dollars to like fix this problem, to bring up a number of 10% of deeds need to have restrictions in the deed? So, the first question I guess I have to ask is, uh, why would anybody want to put a restriction on their deed? Like, if I build a new house, why would I ever want to do that? Like, is there any benefit to me at all? I know we're talking about incentivizing current existing deeds with Peg Dean's comment earlier, but why would I ever want to do that on a new construction? Is it going to benefit me as a, like a builder at all?
Um, as like a small landlord, property owner, I think there are options for the town to kind of incentivize it, but that's something the town would have to, like initiative the town would have to do.
So, thank you. So, housing and urban development is the one who says we need 10% of deeds restricted?
Uh, it's the state. So, it's a, a law that, I think it was 1968 or '69, right after the Fair Housing Act was passed. And so, it was a way for the state to kind of try to get each community to be more equitable and provide a share of affordable housing. So, it's kind of the rules that we've been working with for decades now.
So, what happens if we don't meet this number?
Yeah, that's a great question too, which I should have hit on in the presentation. So, under Chapter 40B, if a community has not met the threshold of the 10% affordability, developers can build in areas that are not zoned for multifamily housing. For example, a developer could get approval, zoning approval, they'd still have to meet, you know, environmental wetlands, things like that. But in terms of zoning approval, they could build, for example, an apartment complex in, in area that is zoned for single family housing. So, that's kind of the incentive to get a plan like this adopted, gradually produce more affordable units. Again, you don't need to produce 400 units, you know, next year. Like, they're looking for gradual incremental.
So, and I don't mean to cut you off or anything, but, so, can they do that in industrial zone? Like, in commercial zones, or are you just saying like?
I think so.
Like, you think so?
I think so.
Okay.
I've only heard of it in single family zones, I haven't heard of.
Yeah, okay, so just, I see what you're saying. So, the different Rs all become like open for everybody in the zoning?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay. Um, what if there's a bylaw that says you can't do that? Southbridge Town Bylaw?
Um, it's a state law that I think supersedes any local bylaws.
Okay, fantastic information. Clearly, wait, do you think that like this K Street and Wells building apartments are going to get approved as they're in process right now, looking to add them to the list? Uh, that might be a question for Kate, but I don't know.
Oh, that's under 40B?
Yeah. Um, yes, they should be, they, they receive their affordability through the Executive Office of Housing in Level Communities, so that they, they should approve them as, as affordable units.
But that's like 200 something units?
Um, I believe, uh, the total is more like 150 between the two of them.
Okay, so that's like 6% or 7% now, we're up to like almost 7% instead of 4.89?
Yes.
Okay, so we're really not that far off. Um, I, as an American, as a Southbridge citizen, I see no benefit to anybody to have 10% of your deeds restricted, okay? So, this is, like, to me, I totally don't support this. But affordable housing, it, it's clear, based on the fact that this number's more like 7%, and I'm sure that you could find more that actually qualify in this strange number, but like, there's plenty of housing available, affordable for all these people. The, the people that need us right now are seniors. So, like, unless this plan is like only for seniors, I'm definitely voting no on it in the future. Um, I just, this affordable subsidized housing or affordable housing? Because you put SHI and then you put affordable, are they synonymous at this point? Like, okay, so subsidized housing, so Wells and the K Street, yeah, that should work. Um, I'm saying like, we, we do the best we can, and I think that's more than good enough. We, we have plenty of property in this town that is affordable, and we need to help our seniors, or this is just shelf this project. And I really appreciate the information. I've, I've learned more tonight about housing than I ever have. Thank you so much.
Any other comments by counselors? Uh, just in closing, I'd just like to say mandates, I was never a fan of, to mandate something, in other words, if you don't get this 10%, we're going to give you the low income housing, when we have so much low income housing in Southbridge, along with affordable, that I thought we would have toppled the 10%. But obviously, whoever's doing the, the stats have it a certain way. There's something that the state does not look at, and they get the blinders on, not only the elderly and veterans, but impacted services. They really don't care. Sewer, water, roads, I mean, schools, you go through the whole gamut when you have a small community like Southbridge, and you say, okay, you're going to force feed us 40B, or you're going to force feed these things in if we don't do this. That's typical Boston, but they'll take care of the migrants. And we sit here and we say, wait a minute, why can't we take care of our elderly, our veterans in our community? Why would we want to build 300 units, 400 units for Framingham and Boston? Explain that to us and I'll vote for it. I don't see any benefit to this plan, especially when you're putting it into the deeds of the private sector, unless you are giving them a lot of money to build it, building, then I would probably understand it. But going forward, it's a, it's a tough nut to swallow, due to the impact of the services. And when you turn around and say, oh, you have to expand your sewer plant, is the state going to be there with the money? Your schools, your police, your fire, I mean, you, you, you bring in thousands of people, you need a lot more services. So, going forward, I think you've heard from the council on this, I think that we're going to be referring this to subcommittee, and it's going to have further discussion. I think we're going to send it to PND for further discussion. I still think that we need to talk about this. There are, there are some needs in Southbridge that we want the state to know, that we are having this problem. We can't throw seniors on the street, but every time they change the rules in Boston, you know, it flows downhill into Southbridge. But I want to thank you very much, it was very enlightening to, to hear the approach. And I think the counselors have gathered some information here tonight from the presentation, and I think that we're going to go to subcommittee next, and we'll move forward. Thank you. Counsel, Counsel Kelly?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Can we get a copy of this presentation? It was not in the materials.
Do you want it digitally or paper?
Uh, digitally is fine, thanks.
I'm sorry, Counsel Daniels, you had your hand up?
Yes. Um, I just wanted to say that we need to be careful with what we're doing here. I, I certainly understand and comprehend the council's feelings tonight, I really do. And I can't say that I'm, I'm, I'm not in agreement with them. I think that the veterans, the elderly, the disabled definitely need our help. But I think that if we're playing off one segment of the population against another, I think that, that that doesn't bode well for us as a community, as a caring community. And from a pragmatic sense, I think that the state has already shown, for instance, in Holden, where there was, uh, some pushback by the town of Holden about zoning changes due to there being an MBTA community, and the state came down on them like a ton of bricks, and it went to court, and the courts all supported the governor and the state in terms of what the, the state is trying to do with their legislation. And it involved taking back grant funds and, and that sort of thing. So, I think, um, I think it's, as Chairman Lazzle said, I think we've had a great discussion tonight. I think it's, I think it needs to go further, and I'm very willing to have it come before my subcommittee. But I think, just as a, just as a word of advice, we need to be careful what we're saying, how we're saying it, and where we're going with this in the long run. Because we do, we do have a responsibility to the entire town, and we also have a responsibility to protect the town in more ways than one. And this is a hot button topic in today's day and age. I think that, uh, there's no, I don't, I don't think anyone doesn't have an opinion, which is a good thing. You know, it's nice to know that the people are telling us what they want, what they need, which is what we always ask for. Let us know what you want, what you need, what you feel, and I encourage that. But we need, I just think we need to be a little careful about what we're doing. I don't, again, I don't, I don't disallow what the sentiment is of the council, but I think we need to be careful how we go about taking care of who we want to take care of. Thank you.
Counsel Junior?
Just one more comment, maybe these people can enlighten me. Out before this, our senator, our state senator proposed legislation this year, just a month or two ago, with, to eliminate 40B in communities 50,000 and less of population. So, I'm curious if that legislation, which I believe came out favorable, Senator Fatman was one of the signers, and how's that going to affect the numbers that you're talking about if they exempt communities of 50,000 and less from 40B status? And I think it's a, it's a plus probably for the communities that don't want to have any 40B housing, but just, just something to be aware of that just happened in the last couple of months.
Counsel Don?
Thank you, last thing. If you can check something, not to have a contra certain years, that's, it should be for life, when the state or the Fed fund money to the landlord to build 50 unit or whatever, low house, low housing income, and they put like a, a kind of a time for it, 20 year or 10 year, and this is, I think, where we're facing a problem. So, I think if they do it for life, then the landlord will think more careful before he sign, uh, to do that kind of a work. So, it's not like a 10 year or 20 year, it should be for life, should be on a D for life. Thank you.
The counselors are all set, I thank you very much. Moving on to Citizens Forum, Counsel?
I guess it's a good time to, because I was going to, this has got Steve, 771 Lebanon Hill. I was actually going to talk specifically about the issue you just were talking about. And that is that, among other things, to cite some of the people that have spoken so far, one of the issues is that we need public housing, publicly owned housing. You want to have the best control of the rents and so forth, have it be owned by the people. Not public-private partnerships, as somebody mentioned earlier, because those usually end up being corporate controlled monsters. One thing that somebody, somebody cited, I think it was Emily cited, the concept of unnaturally affordable properties. One of the issues with that is that they, those are the ones that are usually locally owned. If somebody in the community owns it, they have a vested interest in not screwing over their residents and their, and their local community. The problem is, we start seeing people like White Paper Strategies and the other investment real estate companies coming in, buying up hundreds and dozens and hundreds of units, and they have no reason to keep the rents up, because they're only interested in appeasing the Wall Street bankers. That needs to stop. One of the things that somebody, one of the issues that I think, I recall, I was part of the discussions that went into the, the Forhandful Housing Plan, and one of the things that I recall coming up during the discussion, if I remember correctly, was that we currently have a 10% vacancy rate, which is much higher than most other communities. But the part of the problem, of course, is that a lot of those vacant apartments are currently owned by people like White Paper Strategies. So, they are, they're vacant basically because nobody can afford them. And our Southbridge median income is about 58,000 a year, compared to what the numbers at 117.3, we're less than half of that. That's a huge difference. And the problem is that I think somebody cited earlier that it's regional, it is, it covers most of the county. So, we're talking about places like Harvard and the big moneyed communities on the eastern side of the county that are included in that calculation. We're far from, far from that. Somebody else cited earlier about the young, about younger people, the problem is, younger, a lot of the younger people are working, and they can't make ends meet because of huge college debt, they're getting low paid gig jobs and various other things because our economy is not supporting people today. If you've got money, you're in good shape. If you don't, you have a problem. So, I think that's, that's one of the things about making sure that we cover all of the bases, not just veterans, not just seniors, although those definitely deserve to be covered for all reasons that have been stated by people here. And, but the younger people also need a chance to get a leg up in decent, affordable, genuinely affordable apartments, to give them a chance to get enough money to actually afford houses, otherwise they leave. And, let's see, oh, um, oh, and also, it ties directly into this, is that you might be aware of, you may or may not be aware of this, there's also a petition going around to put rent control back on the ballot. We, we need to be supporting that as a town, because that benefits our community. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council? We moved on to Citizens Forum because this presentation that we just had was for the council and council discussion. So, I went on to Citizens Forum in order to allow Coach Steve to speak. Say your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Bob Gamble, 70, 70 Hillcrest Ave in Southbridge. For four years, the, I've been working with the Conservation Commission to stop the water coming into my property. We bought the land over, over four, little over four years ago, we bought the land, nine acres between where we live, at 70 Hillcrest Ave, and Corvo Ave, is what they're calling it. So, there's nine acres there, and we've been flooded, they destroyed all the wetlands, they've allowed the silt to come in, and we've been fighting it with the Conservation Commission, but I don't see, this has been four years, I don't see this stopping. Now, they're talking about this, we're going to have, they end up going into next year. I don't understand. I've gone to Jack twice, other people in the 55, it's the Pleasant Hills Estates is what the problem we're having. They're dumping their water into our properties, and the people that live at Pleasant Hills Estates, they've got a shutdown order. Go up there and look. I don't know if anybody, if anybody's bothered to go up and look. It looks like a war zone. There's brush six, six, seven feet high on all the undeveloped properties. There's brush six, seven feet high on all the undeveloped properties. The water is still coming in. We, I contacted Representative State Marcy. He contacted me before our last meeting and said, he's talked to Jack, and he's got an EPA guy, and they'll tell you at the meeting. Well, then nobody tells you what's going on. The town bylaws say that you can fine this guy every day. And that they're fining him two days, two days, two days a week. Katie goes up with Ted, and they put out fines, and they say, well, we don't have the manpower to do it. So who's gonna help us? The people at the 55? We've been trying to get people to come to 55 and talk to the people and see what their feelings are. You can't get anybody. Jack, 10 of us went, talked to you a couple of months ago, and got nowhere. We talked to you a year and a half ago, or a year ago, and got the same thing. You said you'd get back to us, never did. I'm at my wit's ends, but I'm asking the council, how do I do this? Tracy Atwater hasn't been up there in about six weeks? No word, no nothing? I'm looking for some, some sort of guidance or some sort of, you know.
I'm not gonna entertain a debate here on the podium. However, let's make facts clear. We have had conversations. To say that nothing was done or no cooperation from the town manager's office is not true. We've had meetings, we've had productive meetings. Is it going as fast as anybody would like? Absolutely not. But what have we done in that period of time? We have had engaged mass DEP throughout the process, and you're aware of that, and there are enforcement orders, not only to Tracy Atwater, but other occupants on Highfield Drive. We have the Environmental Protection Agency that we have been engaged with. They did not move pretty quickly. And you are aware of that, and everybody else was aware of that when we had the meeting with DEP and EPA. The Environmental Protection Agency sat on it for a number of months because of the change in administration. It took us to try to push with Representative Marcy and Senator Fatman to try to get the EPA to even respond to us. You are well aware that we've had engaged legal counsel, and I'm not gonna get into what our legal counsel has, but we have engaged legal counsel, that I'm not privy to discuss in public about what the ongoing actions are. Mr. Atwater, if anybody was to Google Mr. Atwater, is well-known for doing these actions in another state.
I agree.
Right? Okay. We've all had these conversations. You've sat for hours in my office, Katie's office, with Conservation Commission. Everybody in this town has been doing the best that they can with the resources available. Short of us taking legal action, and we've discussed it in public and in private, that there are certain benchmarks that we have to do, right? We now have the Environmental Protection Agency that has an enforcement order and a deadline, I believe, within the last week for Tracy Atwater to take action. We've been advised by certain agencies to file a path. That is what we've been doing. Okay? I'm sorry that it doesn't take, but this is a private development, and I understand the frustration of everybody up there. And we said very clearly when we met with you and the group of 10 individuals, that that's a private development. And while the brush is up there, I can't go on private property to remove brush.
We're not asking.
That we cannot do. We made that very clear, right? We have stop work orders on Mr. Atwater to do any other further action until he complies with the Environmental Protection Agency. He has been given guidance from DEP and EPA to conduct certain activities, right? We could fine him the $200 a day, and when there's another developer up there that you're well aware of, that we have been fining. We are fining those individuals, right? However, a fine does not, they sit there and they collect these fines, and Mr. Atwater is no subject to that. So we're following the EPA, and until EPA says move to the next step, we will follow that guidance. There has been work done up there. It hasn't been done to the satisfaction of the town of Southbridge or the Conservation Commission, but short of us, we are doing the best that we can. But to sit there and say that we've done nothing is disingenuous because we have done everything in our power to follow the guidance of the agencies that have provided us information. And we have the chairman of the Conservation Commission, I'm sure she would understand that, we have been working very hard, right? And we are trying to work out, yeah, right.
They have been.
Right. And I can't give you anything more, and I can't discuss what the next steps legally are in a public forum. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
But they won't even, they won't even tell us on the sidelines what's going on?
I can't tell you on the sidelines. It's illegal for me to tell you what's going on in a closed executive session meeting between us and our legal counsel, sir. I apologize. But that's the way it is. That's the way it is.
Anything else that you would like to add?
Nope.
Thank you.
Guess not.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda tonight? Mr. Buxton, say your name and address.
Good evening, Council. Kevin Buxton, 52 Charlton Street. There are so many great things going on in town, but I think I need to bring back the subject of our curbside trash recycling. The woman that spoke last council meeting did some great research as far as cost and everything goes. I have always remained an advocate of recycling and us having a good curbside program. I know the cost has impacted our local residents in Pleasant increase. I know there are other folks within the council, Mr. Adams, we've spent two curbside advisories. And I think curbside advisory is another subject that needs to be brought up. I know right now you have a newer Board of Health forming, so it's something I suppose if I eventually need to bring to the Board of Health. I've had a preliminary discussion with the town manager. We shared some information, and I'm waiting for last year's end-of-year report to get some idea of what the volumes and costs for our curbside recycling is. It's just a subject that I think we need to reignite. I've always been a big advocate of recycling. Back in 2005, when we were going through the site assignment hearing, I always emphasized the fact, well, whatever the recycling percentage is for the month or the week, I wanted to put a tripod up behind the chairman there. So anytime you tuned into a council meeting, you could look up behind the chairman and see the percentage of our recycling. Because I think it's important for us to realize that recycling is still an important aspect of environmental stewardship. Don't believe the stories that it all gets burnt or thrown in the landfill anyway. There are other opportunities out there, and I look forward to open up a further discussion on our curbside and possible other alternatives. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the council on any issues that are not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Andrew Paradise to the Board of Health effective immediately through June 30, 2026, pending successful completion of state ethics. We have a motion to second, discussion. Town Manager.
Thank you. Mr. Paradise was brought to the Subcommittee for Appointment. Mr. Paradise is a resident of Southbridge. He is, discussion of his will and his serve on the Board of Health. He wishes to take a appointment through the rest of this year to see how it goes, and then if everything goes well, I think he's a strong candidate, recommend his appointment. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to Number 10. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Mike Riley as a maintenance man, equipment operator, M-M-E-O, as recommended by the DPW director, effective upon completion of onboarding and ethics, state ethics. No move, second. Here's a motion to second. Town Manager.
You want the recommendation?
Recommendation, DPW.
Unanimous of all present, recommended.
Favorable in Subcommittee?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Riley was interviewed by the DPW staff. It came before the DPW Subcommittee. All councils spoke highly of him as well, and he's well-known to the community. He has valuable experience. This position as an equipment operator is one that we struggle to hire, so we're very fortunate that Mr. Riley wishes to come work for the town, and strongly recommend that you approve his appointment.
Mr. Riley, would you like to address the council?
My name is Mike Riley. I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the town of Southbridge.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tom.
I've known Mr. Riley for a very long time, and I find his worth, ethics is more than what we could expect from a lot of people. He's licensed, he's a heavy equipment operator, he's a hard worker, and I think he'd be a great fit to the DPW. I would highly recommend him to me.
Thank you. Kelly, then Montague.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have no objection to Mr. Riley. I will vote for this nomination. I would just point out that the term "maintenance man" in this day and age is a little archaic. Perhaps we need to revisit our titles.
If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, real quick. We did have that conversation when we had the DPW contract negotiations, and the recommendation, even by our attorney, was to keep it at that language for right now. So I agree, but it was discussed during the negotiations when we redid the chats. Point well taken.
Councilor Montague.
Thank you very much. Mike Riley, we've all known him for quite a while, and I have to say, obviously hard-working, but he is a very reliable gentleman, and I'm sure he will do great here. Thank you for putting your name in the ring. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present, congratulations. Moving on to Number 11. Vote to transfer $1 million from the Water Stabilization Fund 0845 to TIP Water Capital Account, 3 TB-D, for the town portion costs associated with the intersection improvements on Central Street, Foster Street, Hook Street, Hamilton Street, with any remaining funds at close of project to be returned to the Water Stabilization Fund, number 0845, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents. No move, second. Here's a motion to second. DPW Chairman?
Unanimously recommended.
Unanimous in Subcommittee. Any further discussion? Councilor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is, the transfers do get me a little wondering why we haven't pre-planned this. So didn't we know about the project here at Central Street, Foster Street, et cetera? And we presumably had planned for it, right? So I guess my question would be, why wasn't, why weren't these funds already in the account? Why do we have to transfer it now? I mean, I know it's an accounting thing, but I'm just wondering why.
No, just your point. So the TIP project was a project that took a number of years. The planning and development goes through the state, so the Mass DOT is the one that's managing this project. We were made aware that there are towns' non-participatory costs that we have to fund for the portions of the water line where the TIP project is going to the Larichele-Foster areas, so there's water lines that are going from Main Street to the borders of the TIP project. We were well aware that there was gonna be a number. We waited until we got the estimated, the estimates completed. So we purposely didn't put this money from retained earnings into the project last year. I waited until, rather than say, okay, 1.5 based on the original preliminary, we waited for the bid to come forward and transfer at that point. So this was something that was in the books. It was just an accounting, the money had been set aside, but was set aside in the stabilization fund to be transferred upon the estimates and the bid results.
Okay. So in other words, this was actually planned, this transfer?
Yes, the project was planned.
Okay. So I just, it's good to be clear about that, just simply because, you know, we expect when we do the budget that it would be planned, and the accounts would be, would have the funds needed to pay for whatever project we're doing. So the fact that this is planned, that's good. I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick. When we have retained earnings, we try to put, we put it into a water stabilization fund, unlike sewer retain, which stays there, it's a stabilization fund. The option would be for us to borrow the money, and then that would increase rates. Here, we kept that money aside into stabilization until such time that we needed it for this project.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. 12. Vote to award a contract to Keating for the road improvements not funded by the CDBG program per bid 2025 PAVE, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents. No move, second. Here's a motion to second, discussion.
Unanimously recommended at the DPW Subcommittee. One question was brought up about the CDBG funds not being utilized. Town manager articulated that, why it's not being used, different prevailing wages, and so this is coming out of Chapter 90 money. And then down the road, CDBG money will be utilized for something else. That's why. Thank you.
Town Manager.
The CDBG money will be used for North Street. We just have to rebid it with the bid package having the prevailing wage for the federal prevailing wage as opposed to the state. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 13. Vote to authorize the following change orders on East Main Street Road Project, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents. One. Change order number two, McClure Engineering and Construction Oversight Contract in the amount of $149,544.22 to complete the East Main Street construction using project 64881. And change order number two, AF Amarillo Contract for the sewer relining of the Main Street in the amount of $569,118 to fund, funded from the project number 64882. Second. Here's a motion to second. Councilor Adams.
Unanimously recommended.
Unanimously Subcommittee. Councilor Junior.
Mr. Chair, I might have asked this question, but over the weekend it was brought up to me, and I really didn't explain why. Change order number two, McClure Engineering and Construction Oversight Contract in the amount of $149,544.22 to complete the East Main Street construction using project number. I was asked, didn't we have in-house engineer to oversee parts of this project?
No. This is always gonna be McClure Engineering to oversee this one.
And that's the full East Main Street project, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't remember, I asked that, and I wasn't sure what the reason. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
No, one other question. You have change order number two on McClure, and you've got change order number two for Amarillo. Is that a typo, or is that the way it's supposed to be?
No.
Two different companies.
Two different companies did change orders for that project.
Thank you.
Councilor Val.
Chair, thank you through you. I understand a change of orders, but more than half a million? I mean, what do you see down there, dinosaurs?
I'm sorry, what?
Which one are you?
Which one are you talking about?
Change order two, AF.
Amarillo?
Yeah.
Well, I'll handle this one. When they were doing the water line, the drainage and gas, anything they did to the street, there's a sewer line that's down below, it's an old clay line. And the thing is, it was brought up to our attention that the line down below of everything they're doing has a lot of age on it. And in a couple of places, they dinged it and they repaired it, they got to look at it, and they said, you might want to think about cambering the line. And then if it needs relining, we'll reline it instead of replacing. And then, if it needs relining, we'll reline it instead of replacing it, and we'll do it before we pave it. Because if we pave it and we have a problem, you've got to go through all the work that they already installed to get to the sewer line, and that would be a disaster. That's the main line going to the plant. So, they did camera the line, and they found out that it needs to be relined in a bad way. So, we have talked about it with Amarillo, and then the engineer, and the town manager, and DPW, and it's coming up with, this is what the price is.
Okay. But what I understood when we reviewed that and approved it, they're supposed to check the sewer, and it was added, you know, when you open a street and you do everything. We know 100 years plus every pipe underground in Southbridge. Why we're not included it from the beginning? Like, I think we discussed that. It should be included from the beginning.
I...
I mean, the money was spent for engineer.
I don't remember the sewer ever being discussed as much as the water valves, and they were replacing the hydrants and water valves because they were 100 years old. I think if it wasn't for Amarillo, dinging the line in a couple of places, we would have never looked at it.
I'm not... Thanks for them.
I mean, I'm glad we caught it before the end of the project.
I know, Chair, but...
It was a foolish crime to street.
I think that should be considered in the future, in different streets, not waiting the last week.
I agree.
That's a lot of money, half a million dollars to just throw. We don't either count it, you know, at the budget at that time. So, thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
So, to your point, on the River Crane project, we are doing the relining already. That was part of the original bid, so we did look at that line as part of the... So, we are looking at that sewer line. The raised grant on Hamilton Street also includes sewer line. This project was on the books from many years ago, and I think in the expert of the previous sewer operator, which we have a new sewer operator now, was that it did not need to be replaced at that time. So, this came up, and it's an opportunity for us to make sure that that's in good condition going forward.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the change orders? If not, all those in favor, opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14. Vote to transfer $11,100 from fund account number 0842 Capital Stabilization Fund to account 64499 DPW Capital Purchases for the purpose of purchasing one Billy Goat X3001 Hurricane for the DPW, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Here's a motion, a second.
Unanimously recommended.
Unanimously recommended. unanimous in subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15. Vote to transfer $25,000 from fund account 80842 Capital Stabilization Fund to existing account 64490 Riverbank Erosion to the repurpose as Rail Trail Capital for the purpose of the rail trail bridge repairs, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion. Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So, rail trail bridge repairs? I mean, we're just constructing the rail trail right now, right? So, is this bridge pre-existing, or... I'm not really sure where this is.
Town Manager?
Yep. If you go from the Golden Greek towards Dudley, there's two bridges. Those bridges were not part of the reconstruction of the trail. There were a variety of reasons with Concom, I believe, and those issues with the federal government, so those were left out. The Department of Public Works had built those bridges. They've evaluated, there's some repairs that need to be done, so this would be materials only, and our Department of Public Works would do those repairs.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16. Vote to amend the budget in the CDBG FY 2022/23 Grant to move up to $20,000 from 5C Commercial Rehab to 4C Housing Rehab, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Here's a motion, a second. Discussion. Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was unanimously approved in subcommittee.
Unanimously, the subcommittee. Any further discussion? Counsel Shania.
Yes, thank you. I don't know who would answer this question, but why are we taking away $20,000 from the commercial rehab and putting it into housing rehab? Can somebody explain that?
In an effort to complete our... Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak. In an effort to spend down every penny in our projects, in our activities, 5C Commercial Rehab, 4C Housing Rehab, we're just balancing the books. 4C Housing Rehab, $450,000. Commercial Rehab, $500,000. So, both very large projects, and we're just trying to finish off housing rehab with a little bit of the commercial rehab. We haven't used up all the commercial rehab yet. So, thank you for being flexible. As you know, if we don't spend it down on that activity, we have to come back to you for a program amendment to move it to some other line, so we're just doing that prematurely.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17. Vote to extend the FY 24 Grant to June 30th, 2026, to allow the completion of the activity six infrastructure, North Street Neighborhood, in spring of 2026, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
The motion, a second. Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was unanimously approved.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 18. Vote to authorize applying for a complete Streets Tier Three Construction Grant for up to $350,000 to increase the North Street Neighborhood scope to include additional sidewalks, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
The motion, a second. Counsel Adams, thank you, subcommittee. Counsel Daniels?
Yep, that went through unanimously.
Unanimously, the subcommittee. Questions? Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to thank Peg and her team for actually applying for the complete streets, as we discussed at the subcommittee meeting or after that, about the town not wanting to do this at all years ago. And in fact, it gives us more money in our pocket through the grant process, and allows our streets to be built even, sometimes in cases, larger or more accessible to the public. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed? unanimous of all present. Number 19. Vote to accept the Redevelopment Authority's Urban Renewal Plan Major Amendment. At this time, I entertain a motion to postpone to October 20th, 2025.
Second.
The motion, a second. Discussion. If not, all those in favor, opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 20. Review and discuss town manager's goals, objectives, and evaluation, and take any action therefore. It's a discussion, open discussion.
Mr. Chair, just want to follow... Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just want to follow up with the town council. Everybody got a copy this evening of the draft goals and objectives. I did not give one to the town manager. He already has the same thing we have up front here. But I just wanted to go over a couple of things. You have 12 categories. Six are in the evaluation phase, and also six are in the goals and objectives. So, the evaluation is intended to assess the town manager's performance. The goals and objectives is to move the town in the right direction that the town council sees fit. So, the purpose is to provide a clear framework to evaluate the town manager's performance and guiding the priorities of the municipality leadership. So, at that point in time, I put everything together based on what the town council had reached out to me. I think I kind of hit everybody's requests, so I wanted to go over the evaluation real quick. Six categories. One is knowledge and skill, and there's a long definition underneath there, or purpose under there. The other one is dependability. Number three is communications. Four is core qualities. Five, leadership and management. And six is financial acumen. This is boilerplate when it comes to evaluations itself. I went through the MMA to take a look and make sure that we were kind of following the right directions provided the evaluation. Now, the goals and objectives are from the town council itself specifically. Goal number one is to foster a higher performance, high-performance workforce through collaboration, accountability, and continuous improvement in job performance. Underneath there's objectives. There's multiple objectives under there. If any of the council has any questions, I can answer it for you. Second goal is to strengthen community engagement and enhance the flow of information between the town, residents, businesses, and community organizations. Again, there is the objectives itself underneath it. Three. Review, advance, and where necessary, complete pending projects related to infrastructure and municipal facilities. Again, there's a laundry list there because there is a lot of projects happening within this town when it comes to infrastructure itself. Goal number four is to attract, retain, and support businesses of all sizes, strengthen the local economy, helping to create jobs, enhance town tax base. And within this effort, again, objectives down there, we're talking about redevelopment authority, maybe the Southbridge Business Partnership, and some other businesses within town to help us move in the right direction and help the town manager move in the right direction as well in that. Goal number five is begin strengthening public safety and public works capacity by increasing staffing levels with highly qualified individuals while maintaining fiscal responsibility and developing a long-range plan that recognizes the economic challenges facing the town. We kind of spoke on that this evening when it came to housing itself, but as this town grows, so should our first responders, our DPW, and other departments within our town hall. And it's a long-range plan, five to 10 years. Goal number six, provide financial relief and support to senior residents by exploring programs, policies, and partnerships that reduce the cost burden of essential municipality services. Again, objectives, there's three objectives underneath there as well. Just want to make it very clear to anybody that's watching here tonight, or even to the town council, goals, objectives, and evaluation is not setting any... The purpose is not to set anybody up for failure. It is supposed to help us as a town succeed in the right direction by making sure that our leadership is successful as well. Underneath, and a lot of you have probably done counseling in the past, I will tell you, this is what I do. I literally write up what I need to write up. I give the points, which is going to be one through five, which one is unsatisfactory, all the way to five, which exceeds expectations consistently. I write my thing down. I actually sit down with the town manager and have a conversation with them at the end of the year, end of the fiscal year. The town manager has the right to make comments as well, to either abut something or agree with something. It's his... It's their decision to make. At the... What I did, though, and it's up to the town council to do it, when I set up the scoring evaluation, I did it 50/50. So, 50% of the scores for evaluation, and 50% is based on the goals and objectives. Some towns do 60/40, but it's really dependent on the town council, what they feel is the most important, which way we want to go at this point in time. I did give the scoring sheet. I believe I sent it to everybody. But if you, at the end of the year, come May or something like that, and you start talking to the town manager, and be honest with you, my recommendation only here, if it's unsatisfactory or needs improvement, you should have already talked to the town manager. Also, if he or the town manager receives a one or two, you should be putting an explanation there, and it shouldn't be the first time that individual hears about it. My recommendation, though. I'll leave it up for any questions.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Counselor Adams for taking care of this. Was there... Sorry if you said this. Was there a specific date you want... You were hoping to get these back?
I can send that to you whenever. I know by the contract, the chair has to give a general evaluation, so I can get with the chair and find out what he would like, and I can get that out to you guys.
And then, just a quick question. You know, I remember sending you my goals and objectives a few weeks after I got elected in 2022, and you told me to limit it to three objectives. Why have you... Goals, rather. Why have you the change of heart with six? I feel like three or four maximum, just my opinion, is kind of a more attainable goal for anybody. Like, you seemed to, I thought, think, maybe three years ago.
Well, I think what it was, was to alleviate how many... If the town councilors came in and said, I have three, I have three, I have three, I got three, we got to put this all together, and we don't want that town manager failing. I think it was just to either consolidate what was being asked or make another goal. I hope that kind of answers your question. It was just how many town councilors responded with their questions, and I didn't want to end up going, let's say, 10 goals and objectives. Or 10 goals, I should say.
Did we have six last time? I thought we only had three.
I'd have to look back. I'll let you know at the end.
Okay. I just don't want to, like, no matter who the town manager is, in the future, 10 years down the road, I would hate to box them out with such, like, I mean, staff the DPW. I don't know if that needs to be a goal, but thank you, Counselor Adams.
With that, and that's a good point to bring up. What we're looking at was the services within the community itself. Just like now, you've got a rail trail we're just building, so we should take a hard look. We're already shorthanded when it comes to the DPW workers, or, you know, maybe we need to grow that area. Doesn't mean we have to grow it.
And I apologize. I mean to say, we do need to staff the DPW. I just don't know if it needs to be like a written goal, like, poised for evaluation and things like that. I totally agree that we need to staff it.
But I'll leave that up to the town council. It's easy for a quick deletion. Doesn't, you know, but I just want to make note, I did meet with the town manager.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Counsel Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Excuse me. I feel that this is a wonderful document. The rubric is clear and concise. The goals are relevant to the town. They're doable. It's a lot of work, but the town manager's position is a lot of work, and I noticed that the objectives, that a lot of the objectives are on an ongoing basis. So, to address a concern that Counsel Montigny had, I think that we need to see what is happening, both in an overall picture, looking into the future, and also what's happening on an intermediate and on an immediate basis as well. I think that a 50/50 split in terms of the weight given to the rubric and to the objectives is fine. I might lean myself personally to having the rubric be a little bit more, maybe 60/40, in terms of the personal intuition that you have about the manager. There's a lot of nuance in terms of what any person's position is, and I think that if you have... I think you go with your gut a little bit in terms of what a person is doing, how a person is doing, and I guess how well that they're performing overall. So, maybe 60/40, but 50/50 is fine. It's not enough to, you know, to quibble over. So, I think this is a fine document. I support it. I thank Counselor Adams for what he's done. He's obviously put some time and research into it. I congratulate the town manager on sitting down and discussing this with Counselor Adams. It shows that he's concerned about what his performance is. I think it's a good start that he shows his concern, that he cares about the town, and that he's interested in self-education, I guess you could say. He wants to do well by the town. He wants to do well by the council, and I think that this is a good way to do it, and I congratulate the town manager on being involved in this as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions by any other councilors, requests? Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just want to say thank you to Counsel Adams. This product is thorough, and it's exactly on point. You can tell by the way this is drafted, he has a lot of experience in this realm. So, I would... I just want to say thank you. I don't see any need to change anything. I accept it as is.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Councilors all set? It's town manager.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank for the work with the councilors and Councilor Adams. You know, evaluation is a great opportunity to learn where you are. Nobody's perfect, and there's always room for improvement, and that's what you have to look at, is to what we're doing and what we're doing well, and what we need to improve on, right? And the dialogue that I had with Council Adams and other councilors throughout this process has been great. I think the last conversation that I had with Council Adams was a great conversation as to the balance of, of some of the things that were initially in there, and then taking a look at, okay, I as a town manager could take that on, but if I had to, a good town manager also delegates things to staff, and it was a great conversation to say, okay, I agree with that, but I would, as a manager, I would delegate it because it's not my total responsibility, I would delegate it, but this is what that staff person is now ongoing. Do you believe that person would have the capacity in that department to help achieve that goal? And we tweaked that goal to recognize that there are, if we're delegating things out appropriately, which a manager should be doing, is the staff have the capacity at this time to do certain things? And the feedback back and forth, so I appreciate that. You know, a couple of things were complete. Well, it has to be attainable, right? So I could delegate it and begin it, start building the frameworks. So I appreciate that conversation and look forward to this throughout the year when, you know, again, this is ongoing for the next till June, and then I'll look forward to the feedback and working with you all on these things.
Council Adams?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, just through you to, to Council Montigny's question, it was three. As a matter of fact, I went back, it's been three for the last few years. I know the last couple of years, it hasn't been done, but I also know I took into account when I did it, and I thank you for that question, too.
You're welcome.
But there's been so much going on, and a lot of the work that's in these goals and objectives have already started and have been starting for quite some time now. We would like to see the end, but we're also trying to grow at the same time, so I try to take that in consideration when we're doing it. But like I said, if the council doesn't want something, you know, this is the time where I can just, it'd be deleted right here within a second, so.
Anybody else, council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Council Adams. Yes, thank you, and this is a really well-done document. I just, and you're right, some of these are low-hanging fruit perhaps, the goals and objectives that need to just be wrapped up. I just, I liked it better, three or four, but this is very well-done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Anything changes, amendments? If not, I'd just like to, as chairman, thank Council Adams, fantastic job. Good job, Mr. Town Manager. Nothing like teamwork, it always works. Keep knocking the tin till we, we get a perfect document at some point. But nothing's perfect, we'll continue to work on it. And Dave, thank you very much sincerely.
I just want to make the motion for the town council to accept the goals and objectives.
Is the motion to accept the goals and objectives that have been presented? The council's way of second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda number 21, vote to enter into host community agreement between the town of Southbridge and Sun Fusions Incorporated of 79 North Street for a marijuana product manufacturer, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
There's a motion and second discussion. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've seen a lot, let's get, you know, there's a lot of confusion of how many retail establishments we're allowed to have for within the community, but growth and distribution and labs can be unlimited, just the way the law works. But I will say that at this point, we, we keep getting these people coming in here and saying what they're going to do, and we do this, and we spend our time reading over it and looking at, and a lot of them don't fulfill what they want to do. And they come to this town saying, this is what we're going to do, and they come up with these plans, but then turn around and don't hear from them again. Where's the labs? Where's the, all these people? And it's not the town, it's definitely not. It's one of those things where we keep talking about this, but I want to see something successful with that area. Thank you.
Council, I mean, town manager?
Yes, I agree. I mean, they come, they go. I know this individual is, has definite plans in place for this product manufacturer. The one that we approved on East Main Street, I know we just got information, they just doing some quick redesign inside the facility, and they're working with planned development, so they'll start doing their build-out. The lab, it was Lab X at one time. Unfortunately, that gentleman ended up with a terminal illness and couldn't go forward.
Sorry to hear that.
So that's, because he did, he did contact me and wanted to try to push it through and stated that he was in this position, and we never heard back from him, so.
Sorry to hear that about him.
So, but I do agree, I mean, we've, we've heard him come and go. I do know that the Central Street location on Mellow Tiger, that is, the host agreement's been through and all that, that's now with the CCC. They approved the host agreement, so now they have to get their provisional license and everything. So I know they're on their way. The, their host agreement was approved by the CCC. These host agreements are modeled under all the same ones that we did that have passed muster with the Cannabis Control Commission. The only one that we keep getting back and forth, that we keep tweaking, is Green Meadows, and it's because of license dates, and the state has one date different, so we're going back and forth on those dates. But this one's a pretty simple one, so I assume, I hope that it goes through with no problems, but it models this, all the same language that we use in the other ones. The gentleman is here. I know that this came up as a request to come directly to council for this evening to be located at 79 North Street, so.
Council Dell?
Thank you, Chair, through you. I agree with Councilor Adam, but the gentleman, he ran a business in Southbridge in the past. He do own the building. The building was vacant for a while. I'm glad he come back to Southbridge. He's gonna remodel that building and make it nice and beautiful again, and I want to say thank you for him for coming back and trust Southbridge to open a business again here, and I'm gonna support it highly. He did good business in the past. I know him for a long time. He's a good gentleman, hard worker, and I want to thank him again for coming to town and open a business here again and improve the buildings and make it look nice. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council Kelly and Council Montigny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So this is great that we're gonna, we're getting a new business in town. I wish him all the success, and I'm certainly a laissez-faire economist or capitalist, if you will. So I, you know, I, I want to have as much competition as possible in all industries. And I just would note, though, that we seem to not have any problem getting marijuana businesses in Southbridge. It would be nice if we could get a little more variety, though, and maybe some restaurants and some retail and some, and some even manufacturing moving into town. Great for the marijuana industry, but I'm not sure I want to be known as the marijuana capital of central Massachusetts.
Council Montigny?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Is there some sort of ballpark estimate for when this company would be open? I mean, I didn't want to make him get up here, but if.
Up to the CCC.
Up to the CCC. Once we get this through, that was not the process.
Okay. Any idea how many employees roughly is this place?
Could you please come up to the podium?
If you don't mind, sorry. I'm a full supporter of this, by the way. I just wanted a couple of questions.
We couldn't tell.
I'm sorry?
David Fromm, 79 North Street.
Thank you. Just how many employees roughly is it looking to be?
The entire company will have 20 to 25, but this manufacturing part is probably three to five to start.
Okay, and I know you said it's up to the CCC, but is there, are you hoping, hoping like six months or ASAP really, or?
We're working now to start to prepare it. It's a very big building, by the way, so this is only going to occupy a portion of it, but it will be a springboard toward renovating the rest, which hopefully will help us attract other businesses, you know, to come in and do some leasing in the building, too. I would say six to nine months is optimistic, given the recent history of approvals at the CCC.
And when you say manufacturing, is it like growing or packaging or?
No, we have a special permit to grow in Brookfield.
Okay, so it's the?
We're coming to Southbridge to manufacture.
To like package and stuff and?
Yes.
Is that what that, okay. I just don't know the flow.
Extraction, packaging, rolling.
Okay.
The things one does with these products.
All right. Thank you very much.
Right. So no dispensary, it's just manufacturing. Just to Council Kelly's point, we have seen a lot of interest from restaurants coming to the town. We just received a packet for 37th Central Street for a new restaurant that's asking for an all-alcohol license. We had another gentleman that called the offices that's looking to put in a 12 Crane, another restaurant as well, with Mr. McCarthy. We had a dance studio that just moved in from Sturbridge that came over to the cannery. They're leasing space for the dance studio, and they are now activating the cannery with musicals and performances like that. We are really starting to see a lot of interest in Southbridge. Manufacturing-wise, I know the council chairman and I have had many conversations now with the ongoing, and I'll just make it quick because I know this is on this, but to that point, the Franklin Realty property, because of the issues that the owner of that complex has, there are parties in that complex that are expressing, that already have buildings there, that are expressing interest in doing something with that park, and conversations that we've had with them, they receive an opportunity for changes within the park. So I think we have some very good movement going on.
Thank you. Okay, back to this gentleman here. Any questions from the gentleman? I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any further discussion among the councilors? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
If you want to wait, we'll sign it before you leave. We'll sign it before you leave.
Moving on to 22, vote to request an extension to the original home rule petition by amending subsection E of section one of chapter 214 of the Acts of 2022 by striking out the figure 2025 and inserting in place thereof the following figure 2029. Allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do have a substitute motion. So this, this reason for this language is we have district licenses, all alcohol district licenses. They're set to expire at the end of 2025. We're petitioning that they extend those district licenses for a few more years so that we can, because of all these restaurants that are coming in, we want to have those licenses available. Representative Marcy is working with us in our town manager's office to petition the general court for that. I do have a substitute motion that he gave us, we, I had worked with him originally on this first language. He sent us language, I know Council Adams has been involved in it as well, sent us new language that was done by the council, the House Council. So if I may entertain this, it would just be, rather than amend it, because there's certain, was due a substitute motion, so this is a move to substitute, Mr. Chairman, vote to petition the general court for legislation to extend the license issuance deadline contained in chapter 214 of the Acts of 2022 by striking out the figure 2025 in subsection E of section one of said chapter 214 and inserting in place thereof the following figure 2029. Allow the town manager to sign all related documents. Essentially the same thing, but it's in their formal language.
Is there a council to make that motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
You're accepting a substitute motion now as the new motion, I think. Don't you have to vote again on that?
No, you proposed the substitute motion.
Okay, so that's.
So we voted on the substitute motion, so I think we're all set. Moving on to council's forum. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, just a couple of things. I want to thank Southbridge Business Partnership and all the volunteers that came out this weekend on Saturday. We're on the Autumn Fest, and there's a lot of planning behind the scenes, but it was really successful, more vendors than I've ever seen over there, and there was constant flow of people, and plus, you know, the day was, was beautiful, so there was quite a few people out and about, and obviously the police department for putting on their unity in the community as well. So that was good to see. And then, last thing is, I did ask Peg while we were sitting here if she could provide the housing plan. It's on civil spaces. I can forward that to you, or you can just look on the town's website under the economic development, under civil spaces. Thank you.
Council Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing for forum today.
Council Dell?
Thank you, Chair, through you, to the town manager. I'm just following up on a computer station and tax collector. The idea when are you going to put it up?
We had it stated about the inspections department. We clarified that there is one there. Working back with Victor to see about securing the second one for the tax collector, or if they can share that computer station. As far as the cash payments, as soon as Michelle gets back, we'll visit, because she's the one that had put a stop to the cash payment, so as soon as she gets back, we'll visit that question, and she'll be back in a week and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Council Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to compliment the Southbridge Business Partnership on a wonderful job they did with the Autumn Fest, and also to Chief Shane Woodson and the work that he did to put on his Community for Unity. It was a wonderful Saturday, great weather, a lot of merchants, a lot of people came down. Everyone had a good time, just a great, great day, another good day for Southbridge, and I was pleased to be able to take it all in. And while I was there, I bought two tickets to a spaghetti supper that's coming up. It's going to be at the Italian Club on 10/24, October 24th, and it's sponsored by the Women's Auxiliary.
No, there's men on it.
There's men on it, too? The auxiliary?
Thank you.
Okay, the Veterans Auxiliary in the, in the town of Southbridge, and they're, they're supporting the Veterans Council. It's a good cause, definitely something you want to consider. Tickets are limited, and they're going fast. I know they are. I saw them being sold, and they were going out the door. So please consider buying tickets. Again, it's on October 24th, and it should be a good night. Thank you, that's all I have.
Council Provost?
I have nothing tonight.
Council Ortiz?
Nothing tonight.
Council Genya?
Nothing tonight.
So vice chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.[1750.62]